Sorry, I'm leaving you.
I gotta get my audio.
No, she's got to turn.
Oh, it's on now. There it is.
There you go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna, excuse me, call this, Planning Commission meeting, July 11, 2024, to order. Please stand with us as we do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In this portion of the meeting, we're gonna have our, addressing the, to address the commission, anybody in the public who wish to address the commission in regards to something that is not on our agenda, you're free so, you're free to do so, and we'd love to hear your comments. Anybody? Anybody online?
Nope.
Beautiful. Okay. Now on to our regular calen, and to our regular calendar, to approve the minutes of April 11, 2024 meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
A second.
Hey. All in paper?
Aye.
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 Okay, beautiful. Onto item number two. The Reclamation Plan Amendment, P 24-02. And we'll staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Flynn. I'm an environmental compliance specialist with the Trinity County Natural Resources Division. I handle permitting and inspections for surface mines for Trinity County, and I'll be presenting this item to you today. The item before you is P-24-02. It's a reclamation plan amendment for the now-closed Smith Pit Gravel Mine in Junction City. It's located just past the Junction City Elementary School on Red Hill Road. So I'm gonna be referencing a map that's on page 10 or so of your, your staff report throughout this, of your packet, rather, throughout this presentation. Looks like this. I do have extra copies, which would be easier for folks just to have an individual copy. So to begin, I'll provide some regulatory context behind the laws and regulations that govern surface mines in Trinity County, provide some brief project history, circle back briefly to surface mining regulations to introduce the reclamation plan amendment, provide a brief project evaluation, including a sequoet determination, and I'll close with a recommendation. So in Trinity County and throughout the state of California, surface mines are governed by the Surface Mining Reclamation Act, which is abbreviated as SMARA in, in code. And before I dive into how exactly that set of regulations is administered in Trinity County, I'm gonna give you a couple definitions that I'll be using throughout the presentation. So the first is a reclamation plan. So what is a reclamation plan? So in California, a reclamation plan is a set of criteria that is required to be met for a surface mine to be reclaimed. So after the mining is complete, or in the case that the operator of the mine becomes insolvent or can no longer operate the mine, then the county has a responsibility to reclaim that land, and the reclamation plan states exactly what has to happen in order for that to be considered reclaimed. The second term is a financial assurance. The financial assurance is money that's put up by the mine operator to reclaim the mine to the specifications in the rec plan, reclamation plan. Again, in the event that the mine can, can, can no longer operate or it becomes insolvent, and that money is held on file by the Trinity County and the California Department of Conservation. So they kind of work hand in hand. The reclamation plan exists to stipulate what needs to happen for the mine to be considered reclaimed. The financial assurances are meant to tie into that reclamation plan, and they're meant to be adequate to complete all of the steps that are required to reclaim the mine as stipulated in the plan. SMARA, Surface Mining Reclamation Act, is state regulation, but it's administered by Trinity County as the local SMARA lead agency. It's administered at the state level by the Division of Mine Reclamation. That's abbreviated as DMR. And SMARA applies to gravel mines, as I've been mentioning, which this is one or was one. For, for its part, the county does inspections and manages use permits and financial assurances and submits these to the Division of Mine Reclamation and operators for their part submit annual reporting to the Division of Mine Reclamation. And a use permit, a reclamation plan, and financial assurances are all required to open and operate a mine in Trinity County. Now, a key part about this relationship between the state and the county is this need for concurrence. And concurrence in this context means that while the county has some autonomy as to how we administer the surface mining program in order for the county to consider a mine reclaimed and close, that determination has to be concurred with, by the state. And that concurrence is based on the reclamation plan in, in effect at the time the, the concurrence is requested. So whatever is in the reclamation plan, whatever requirements are there, they have to be met to the letter in order for DMR to concur with a, with a determination that the mine is reclaimed. The project was originally permitted in the mid 1990s to mine the dredge tailings from the river corridor. It was originally permitted as a scoop and haul operation with a processing location in Weaverville, and that, that location closed long ago, probably decades, and that was in, that was in the industrial park in Weaverville. The project was permitted in phases. Phase one was permitted in 1995, and it's already been reclaimed, and that is marked as phase one on the map I just mentioned. It's on River Right. Phase two is the subject project, and that was permitted in 1997. That's marked on the map as well, on River Left. The mine was operated by the previous operator until it was purchased by the current operator in 2018. In 2017, we experienced the Helena Fire, which exacerbated a slide at Big French Creek on Highway 299, which closed the highway and created an emergency situation in which the material that was blocking the highway needed to go somewhere. So as a result of that emergency situation, that material was imported by Caltrans to the, to the, to the project, and that's 550,000 cubic yards of material. That's, that's still there today, and that's referred to in the presentation as the slide material. The Planning Commission revoked the use permit for the project in 2021 in response to community outcry due to impacts from operation of the mine. And the revocation of the use permit effectively closed the mine at that time. So the mine's been closed since 2021. So the project site is located within the regulatory floodway of the Trinity River. That's a technical term. Essentially, it means that the, the mine is located in the conveyance channel of the river. It's located in the floodplain. That's a good way to describe it. As I mentioned, it was a previous gravel mine, used to have tailings throughout the property. Some of those tailings have been harvested as part of the project. And it's aesthetically fairly typical to most of the Trinity River corridor with large tailing piles. So the current reclamation plan requires all of the following to be met for the Division of Mine Reclamation to concur with a statement that the mine is reclaimed. All of the tailings as originally proposed in the use permit when it was issued must be harvested or removed, and that's, that's the green shaded area on the map. The access road needs to be removed or ripped up. The site itself needs to be sloped toward the river for drainage, and the, there's a berm that is in place between the mine area and the river that's made up of tailings that was intended to create a, a buffer for safety and to protect the river. And that's still in place, and it's become encroached with riparian vegetation. And then the removal of the 550,000 cubic yards of slide material will also need to take place under this plan. So the county is obligated to reclaim abandoned mines after a period of one year after becoming idle. And as I mentioned, when the use permit was revoked, that effectively closed the mine. The mine became idle at that time. So the deadline to reclaim the mine after it became idle was April 8 of 2022. So that deadline was not met, and it's not like, I wouldn't say that the state is beating down the county's door to reclaim the mine, but we still have a responsibility to take steps to reclaim it in order to maintain compliance with the state. Now I'm gonna pause and describe something that was not in the staff report. So the, the county earlier this year went through the steps to claim reclamation was complete under the current plan. We went as far as attempting to obtain concurrence from the Division of Mine Reclamation. They conducted an inspection. They, they said that because the, the reclamation plan that's current on file, all of those, all of those criteria were not met, they, they could not concur. So that's what brings us to our amendment today because the, the reclamation land could not be implemented as it was described. So there are a couple paths we could take to resolve that. Amendment is one of them. I'll describe the other paths here. So, as I mentioned, we have a responsibility to reclaim. Have a few options of what we could do. The county could compel the operator to reclaim the mine, the operator of the mine, the owner. We could, we could compel that through, through some sort of mechanism, legal action, whatever, however that would go. The county could initiate reclamation using the financial assurance that's on file for the mine. And the county could, or the county could amend the reclamation plan to change the reclamation standards to achieve reclamation. So in this case, for this, for this particular project, the financial assurances are very low for this mine. So as I mentioned, the financial assurance is meant to be on file with the county to be used at their, at our discretion, their discretion, to reclaim the mine. So it should be able to, you could, should be able to cash that in and go and go mobilize equipment and reclaim, right, to the standards of the reclamation plan. But in this case, the financial assurances that the county holds is only $1,600 for this mine to complete all of those steps, including the trucking of the material off of the property. So the, the financial assurances were not updated when project operations drifted. It was initially permitted as a scoop and haul operation, but use drifted to include processing and sorting on the property. The financial assurances were not updated at that time, and the financial assurances were not updated when the slide material was imported to the property. So in lieu of a, of an arduous and long and potentially contentious process of updating financial assurances and reclaiming to the current plan, and given that the Division of Mine Reclamation already denied reclamation under the current plan, this amended reclamation plan is, has been applied for by the operator. So if approved, the reclamation plan in front of you today would amend the previously discussed requirements put in place to achieve reclaimed status under SMARA. Specifically, the existing tailings berm would be retained. The site has already been degraded to slope toward the river to the degree possible, so we don't have to worry about that. The onsite access road will be maintained for future uses, and the slide material will be maintained onsite. So as I mentioned, the nature of the project has shifted through the years due to the importation of the side material and the expansion of the original intended use of the property. And the current reclamation plan is no longer a reasonable set of requirements to achieve a reclaimed state. In order to achieve reclamation plan under SMARA, a reclamation under SMARA, each specific criteria needs to be met, again, as I mentioned, including removal of the side material. And while each requirement at the time, the reclamation plan was approved, it certainly had an intended purpose. Enough time has passed, and the project has evolved such that staff believes these requirements no longer need to be fulfilled to reasonably consider the, the mine closed and reclaimed. Should the, the current plan be implemented to, to the letter, it would be very impactful to the community. The slide material would, would need to be trucked off the property to another location, past Junction City School. A really rough number is 65,000 truck trips would, would need to pass the school because a long end up only holds 17 cubic yards of material. So we're talking about 55, 550,000 cubic yards of material. It's a lot of trucks. So that's millions of dollars of investment. I don't have a number, but it's, it's more than $1,600, right? So, you know, we could get creative. We could, we could try to do a conveyor over the river and get some rock that way, but, you know, there's, that's a hurdle that's not really even in this conversation. The tailings berm that's, that's there has been come encroached with riparian vegetation, and it doesn't really serve its purpose as a buffer any longer. It also would likely be removed by future restoration actions, as I'll describe. And the existing access road is an aggregate road. It's not paved. It does not need to be ripped up to maintain a reclaimed state, in my opinion. So the Bureau of Land Management has proposed to acquire this property, and they've entered into a contract to do so by October of 2024 this year. So the approval of this amendment, should it be approved, is really only the first step in a process that would see the property reclaimed through river restoration work or through use as a public access area or community campground use area. And so in order for the property to be reclaimed through this kind of creative process, multi-agency cooperative process, this amendment, approval of this is kind of the first step in, in that, that avenue. And so staff supports the outcome of the BLM taking ownership of the property, really feel it's best for the, for the county, for the operator, and for the community. And if the, you know, if the amendment were to be denied, would prohibit the Bureau of Reclamation, Bureau of Land Management, from taking over the property because they would have to then expend public money to reclaim the land to this, to the criteria in the reclamation plan, just like any other agency or any other owner. And I'd say that we can reasonably expect BLM will take ownership of the property should the amendment be approved, given that they have entered into a contract with the landowner to purchase the property by October. And we have some BLM folks here, and I think, I believe Dan Ryan's on Zoom. He's the guy I've been working with the most. He's a realty specialist, and they can answer any questions about that. This step is only the approval of a reclamation plan amendment. It's just one, one, one step, one hurdle across in a, in a, in a process that has a few hurdles. Should the, should the amendment be approved, it, if the current reclamation plan were to be enforced, it would be, as I mentioned, very impactful to the Junction City community, while amendment allows the, the community to kind of move on. It goes into the property, goes out of private hands, goes out of commercial use, goes into federal and public land for use by the, by the community. And amendment of the reclamation plan allows Trinity County to maintain compliance with SMARA and to close the mine. The amendment is supported by the North Fork Range, Junction City School, and Junction City Fire Department, and letters of support from each of those agencies are included. So for some county specifics, the, the parcels associated with the project are zoned open space in two different varieties of rural residential, five acre minimum and 2.5 acre minimum. I would say the project is consistent with these zoning codes. It's, you know, the, the mine was operating in these zoning codes, and this amendment effectively closes the mine. It doesn't propose any development. So this, I would say that it's compliant with the zoning code for that reason. There is a flood hazard overlay, and there were some issues with that, but they have been resolved, as I'll describe in just a minute. General plan designations are as well, open space and rural residential. I'd say that the rationale for why the project is compliant or consistent with these general plan designations is similar to the zoning code. There's really no development being proposed. California Environmental Quality Act, it only applies to projects would have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. The nature of the reclamation plan amendment before you is such that there is no environmental impact proposed. There is no work proposed. The amendment, the amended plan would remove the need for the operator to impact the environment to achieve reclamation under the current plan, which again would require trucking and movement of material. The amendment proposes no change to land. I did consider the evolution of the scope of the project when making a sequoet determination, but ultimately I chose to follow secret guidelines to just generally describe physical environmental conditions as they exist at the time environmental analysis is commenced. So this amendment was applied for earlier this year. The sequoet baseline is that time, that date, and this project does not propose any changes to the baseline, so I would consider it to be sequoet exempt. As I mentioned, there was an issue with the FEMA flood zone compliance, but staff and the county partnered with our, our partners at the Trinity River Restoration Program to include this, this project in hydraulic modeling for one of their projects that's going on right now. It's just down river from this area. And so the importation of the slide material needed to be accounted for in the FEMA flood mapping, and we were fortunate to be able to, to incorporate that flood mapping update into the TRPs project. The slide material has been tested for naturally occurring asbestos, the results of which are in the packet, came up negative, and there is an erosion and sediment control plan that's been implemented on the slide material. Staff solicited comment from the North Fork Range, Junction City Volunteer Fire Department, and the Junction City Elementary School. The letters of support for the project from these organizations are in your packet. They're attached. No other public comment was received. California Department of Fish and Wildlife commented in support of the project. There were no other agency comments received. And in addition to those from the community, the Hoopa Valley Tribe and the Trinity River Restoration Program both provided letters of support for the project to be approved. Specifically, the Hoopa Valley Tribe has committed to obtaining grant funding for a river restoration project on the property should the BLM take ownership. And they, I think they even gave a timeline, like they'd do that within two years. And the TRP, Trinity River Restoration Program, has a vested interest to see the floodplains of the river restored, and they are currently working just upriver from the project, and a river restoration program rep is, is here if you have any questions for them. So county code stipulates that there are specific requirements that must be met for a reclamation plan to be approved. They're included in your staff report. I'm not gonna go over all of them right now, but I would advise that they've been met, and given the Bureau of Land Management and the community interest to see this approved, I recommend approval. So I reviewed a little bit of regulatory context, reviewed the project history and information, reviewed the project evaluation and gave a sequoet determination, and then provided you a recommendation. So I'm available to answer any questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Does anybody have any questions? Have any questions?
No, I, I have a couple. So I'm just trying to make sure. So the reclamation plan is only for phase two because it looks like on the map, phase one has been sold.
It appears your Zoom connection has failed. It's been out for a few minutes.
How do you know?
I got a text.
Oh, you're gonna say.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, we have, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break and to get reconnected with Zoom.
Zoom's working.
Oh, okay. Still working? Perfect. Okay. Okay, our five-minute break has just ended. Mr. Flynn, thank you very much. Time flies when you're having fun, and so.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So the reclamation plan. the reclamation plans for phase two, um, it looks like some earlier amendment took out phase one because it looks like all those parcels now are in some other ownership. Is that right? Okay, great. Um, I'm just curious, what happens to the sixteen hundred dollars?
That's a good question. Um, I've spoken with the operator. He's not particularly, it's not the current operator's money. It would, it would go back to the previous operator. I don't know specifically what would happen to it. Such a low amount. I don't know if I really thought about that.
Yeah, I was just curious. Um, and, you know, okay, well, I'll wait for comments.
Okay, anybody else have a comment?
Uh, I have a question. Did the operator, the previous operator buy or receive any payment, um, for the deposition of the slide materials onto their property?
I don't believe so.
So they just allowed it to be deposited out of the goodness of their hearts?
Well, it's a, it's a resource for them. I mean, they could have made money off of it. It's good material. They could have, they could have processed it and sold it. I mean, it was a benefit to them.
Okay.
Ms. Rory, you have any questions?
No, I'll wait.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Flynn. Mr. Buick? Is, did he be interested in the, um, the applicant or the, the applicant's agent? Have any comments?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Is he?
He said, no, sir.
Mr. Buick, are you on? Okay, well, we'll close the, um, close that part. Do we have any?
Oh.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Buick, did you want to make a comment?
No, I didn't have any comments at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buick. Uh, okay, do we have any public comment? Anybody in the room? Anybody online? No raised hands? Okay, well, we'll close that aspect right there. Um, do we have a motion for discussion purposes?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendment to the reclamation plan with the condition that if the transfer to BLM is not completed, the amendment would be nullified and the previous reclamation plan would be reinstated.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And I just, you know, I don't mean to be a real skeptical, you know, kind of person here, but I could see where we could amend this, and then the, um, the uh, owner of the property could say, oh, you know, maybe I'd rather sell to somebody else. And so I was just trying to preclude that. So, I mean, there's an incentive that, um, they would go ahead and transfer it to BLM, and if that didn't, if that fell through, then he'd be back where he is right now with the, um, current reclamation plan.
Will SMARA accept that contingency so that you would come into compliance and then potentially go back out of compliance?
If the, I'd have to confer with them about how that would shake out. You may have to readopt the old reclamation plan. Might have to, you know, agendize that somehow for readoption.
Right. I mean, there might be a better way to word it, but I'm just trying to figure out how to, um, you know, encourage the path that we're on and that some bug doesn't come down at some future point and a landowner decide, I'm gonna go, I'm just gonna keep the property and sell it to a higher bidder.
Sure.
I don't, I don't want that to happen.
I, I would doubt that that would happen. Um, and the reason I say that is the, my very first meeting as a planning commissioner, it was like that, it was the, this was the the thing, and it was a long, grueling, it's a pretty toxic environment over the, but the truth be known, I sat for hours listening to little kids, each one give their report of the, how they, the thing was a nuisance. So I wouldn't imagine that they would, but, um, looking at the, the support, I'll, I'll be a hundred percent honest with you. I, I struggle with the fact of where we sell something to the government because it's like the government has so much as it is, they can't manage anything. And, uh, and that gets things out of the public, out, it, it makes the public, the personal stuff less and less, where the government has more, but under the circumstances of, um, the, I guess, toxicity of the relationship with the Mr. Buick in Junction City and every, how everybody in Junction City was opposed to it. And, um, I would probably say that this is the best step forward and, um, because it was like, this is the third time that I've dealt with, uh, the, the Smith tailings has come before me.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I think this is a great idea. I think what BLM, you know, having the, the ownership with BLM, I, I like, I love BLM. Um, I think that's a great path, and I just want to make sure that we go on that path, that he doesn't decide to sell to a higher bidder or something instead, um, who maybe won't be as much of a steward of the land. So that's, that's why I was proposing that condition. But, yeah, I think it's a, it's a great idea. I think it's a great problem being solved. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Mr. Don?
Well, I believe that part of the reason we're looking at the amendment is also to get Trinity County in compliance with the state. And so that's the main reason this is happening, right? Um, it does appear that, um, the owner could benefit from it because they don't have to comply or spend any money in the process of reclamation any longer or even worry about it. So I would say that the assurance would have to be that there's a guarantee of transfer would be the only kind of assurance that I could see. But the step is still a necessary step for the county.
Right. Yeah, that's why I motioned to approve it. But just with some sort of condition that would guarantee that transfer. However you want to word it.
Yeah, it's, in my opinion, that guarantee is going to be hard because it's not going to be beneficial for the county for them to come back and have us reapprove the previous reclamation or the current reclamation plot process. Um, I agree that we shouldn't be trying to have actions on the property twice, so do reclamation and then sell it and do more restoration activities, but I'm hung up with having a private entity be able to get their get out of jail free card and not complete their restoration actions. And then the funding is going to rely on taxpayers, local government, like federal taxpayers, to then do the work. And yes, there is potential for grant funding, and yes, the TRP and Hoopa and Yorac have been very successful in doing that. But there's no guarantee, and, and their letter did not guarantee grant funds. It said they would attempt to get grant funds and send, submit two proposals a year um, along the way. So I'm just a little hung up with that, like we're allowing, and, and what does that say moving forward? Are we going to allow other landowners that have mining operations follow with a similar suit? Have we done it in the past that we've had other private mines transfer into public lands and then the public has cleaned them up?
I, me, oh, were you gonna say something, Ms. Rory?
Um, no, well, I think there's not going to be a higher bidder because it's the US government and they spend our money like it's going out of style. So I don't think there's going to be a higher bidder. Um, one problem I have with it is as far as, uh, other people within the community have to jump through these arduous hoops to get their SEQA documents in order, and it just seems to me that through county mismanagement for not having enough money in a bond to do the reclamation, we're willing to just sweep it under the carpet. Just basically get it out of our hair, someone else's problem. And I think it's a bad process. I think it's a good process for the, for the cannabis growers because apparently the SEQA doesn't matter in this one, so maybe it doesn't matter to them either. So, um, ultimately, I think there's no chance of it coming back because, as I said, the government will spend our money with no problem. Um, I just think it sets a bad precedence, and it's, um, leaves a bad taste in my mouth that we make everyone else jump through hoops, but because of mismanagement, we're gonna sweep this one under the carpet.
Well, I, I, I agree with what you're saying there because one of the things that, um, that gets me on this pro- particular project is that the county allowed them to and they arranged to do that, and if, and I, I clocked it off the second time I was on the, uh, it came before us. I actually violated some, some protocols.
I remember.
You remember that? I, I drove down and walked into the pit and was looking around at the thing and, and accident, well, not accidentally, I did it intentionally, but I didn't know the, the correct protocols at the time. Um, but it was like, but if they had gone up, what is it, Castle Rock or whatever, that's just this side of the, the, there's a rock, there's another rock quarry there where actually that would have been a whole lot more suitable. And it's like, it's like only like less or right around a mile difference if you cut off it and went on the Red, Red Hill Road and all that kind of stuff. And, uh, it was like the person who made the thing, I believe he was part of it, was a county employee, part of Department of Transportation. He had, he had to been involved in that, and it was like, um, so that was, um, that was poor on, that was poor on counties part two. And so, um, but no, I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying, but I also know this, that it was like for Mr. Buick to come back in, it was like this, this in my personal opinion, it was like this will never be cleaned up whatsoever.
Um, I had another question. Maybe some of you know the answer as to how the Caltrans material originally arrived on the property. Was it trucked in? Yes, okay. And my familiarity with TRP projects and the work that they do, there is some removal and moving of materials to other places. And so with the Junction City Fire Department saying that they're so excited that that material is not going to then be hauled off, we don't necessarily have a commitment from the restoration agency saying that all that material will stay on site, and it may not be possible because of their restoration goals and what they're looking for for that property. And so I would anticipate that we still see some removal, and we're gonna see heavy equipment potentially used in that area as well. And now in the long term, it may be quieter and restored and heavier, but they, it's not going to completely absolve the issue of trucking going to need to be necessary at that site.
But wouldn't they need, they'd need some environmental approval, a NEPA document or something if they were gonna do a restoration there, right, and start removing there. They'd have to look at the impacts of things like the trucking and stuff, right?
Yeah.
And people wouldn't be able to comment and.
Correct.
And, uh, I think, uh, your, the point you make is very accurate, but I think Junction City community will see that uh, as far as their letters of support, a short-term pain, long-term gain, you know, so if they do have to deal with some of that, I, I foresee the community will, uh, embrace moving on from this, which has been a saga for a number of years. So I think I think it's a good, good plan.
Uh, one thing about the SEQA. Um, so this is, this is a, a property that was already destroyed prior to SEQA. It's already mined heavily, and the project itself under its, it was begun and then abandoned, and the point of reference that he was using for the SEQA is any further actions taken. So just a, a good point to remember. It's not just, that part's not just sweeping it under the carpet literally. There is some need for it to go away, obviously, and the, and the community sees it that way of Junction City, and so it's just something to think about, too.
Any other thoughts? Rory? I'm sorry. Ms. Carol? Okay, shall we bring her up to vote?
You want a roll call?
Yeah, we'll do a roll.
Before we do, one more thing. How do we verbalize something like your assurance change because you in effect would be asking the county to go back and reverse what the amendment is in, under those circumstances? And then it would be based on this, on the sale of the property, which would make it, uh, questionable.
Well, I'm assuming that this is, is a remote possibility that we would need this. But what I'm proposing is that we approve, the planning commission approve the amendment to the reclamation plan and add a condition that if the transfer to BLM is not completed, the amendment would be nullified and the previous reclamation plan would be reinstated. Have the October date in there, um, because, or there might be extensions.
Okay.
And just reclamation plan as, which was what, dated October? Is that what you're saying?
I'm just concerned that, like, if we leave it to, like, until a contract is completed, it might drag out.
I think she's saying that you just need to say
Oh.
by October twenty twenty-four.
So I'll, I'll ask the BLM folks. Is that a hard date for you?
Um, Dan Ryan is on the phone. Probably answer better. I would, my guess is he'd be a little worried about what might the realty actions can take longer than we're planning on, and, yeah, like contracts with purchase and such can't be extended.
And what was his name?
Dan Ryan.
Dan Ryan? Mr. Ryan, are you on, um, line? Oh, he's on a phone call?
He's the weird number. Okay.
Mr. Ryan, can you hear us?
Laura, would it be appropriate if we used a deadline such as before December or January first of twenty twenty-five so that allows for some extension?
And I, I think I'm unmuted now.
Oh, there we go.
Dan Ryan.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry about that. And, yeah, sorry I can't be there in person. I, uh, I'm actually at a family reunion camp out, and I just could not make it, but I apologize. I can't be there. Um, yeah, so, so, um, I, I hear all your concerns, and I think, um, they're very much warranted. Just to give you all a little bit of a background, um, the funding we're using to acquire this property is, is not just our general taxpayer dollars that funds the government. Um, it's actually, we got some, um, funding secured from offshore drilling royalties, basically, in the, in the um, southern part of the United States, and that's what we're using to purchase this kind of stuff. Um, I don't know, um, I don't know what, like, Bureau of Reclamation and the Treaty Rivers Restoration Group uses for funding for those kinds of things, but I just wanted to explain that a little bit better. Um, you know, as far as our plans for it. Now, um, as far as the, the assurances that, um, you know, BLM would acquire, um, that's something, you know, Patrick and I have talked about a lot because, um, you know, we, we have an appraisal that's done on the property, and the appraisal is done based on the current conditions, and it's based, you know, it's, it's, it's not a, it's an appraisal that's not done to where it has an intended buyer, um, if that makes sense. So when you sell your property and it gets appraised, the property is appraised for just any buyer coming and buying your property. And so that's how this appraisal has been done and the value has been done. And so the one main concern I have with the contingency is if, um, the appraiser has to take into account that the only buyer is going to be the BLM, um, that could potentially impact our appraisal and having to do, you know, basically redo an appraisal. Um, just because the appraiser is taking into account that any buyer can come and purchase the property under these current conditions. And that's how they, that's how they appraised it. So I might have to look into that a little bit more and, and check our comfort level on if there is some sort of contingency placed, if that's going to impact the value on the property, um, you know, whether it goes up or down kind of thing, but it's just one of those things that it, it takes us a long time to even get to a value. And so, um, that's definitely a concern of mine. Um, and then, you know, the assurance is as far as if BLM is going to purchase it, and so we've, we've already entered into a purchase agreement with the landowner, um, that is contingent of this rec. And so we've, we've already entered into a purchase agreement with the landowner, um, that is contingent of this reclamation being released. Um, and right now that, that goes through the end of October. Um, we also do have a partner, um, Western Rivers Conservancy, um, who also has a purchase agreement on the property if we go beyond October and it can't be negotiated. And so we do have some assurances through the end of the year that, you know, that we're, you know, we're very serious and we're, we're wanting to purchase the property. Um, so I don't know if that helps some of the concerns, you know, I definitely, I definitely hear you. I think that, you know, those are great questions you're raising as far as having that assurance that, um, you know, the property is gonna, you know, not just change hands and go to, go to some other owner that no longer has the, a reclamation requirement. So, um, but yeah, if there's any questions for me, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to unmute earlier. I didn't know if it was star nine or star six. Um, but yeah, and apologies, I can't be there as well.
No problem. Thank you very much for your time. Is that, how's that? For you, Ms. Carroll?
Well, I, you know, I don't want to interfere with whatever their appraisal would be. But I'm still concerned again that it's not a really hard, you know, requirement.
Well, we did hear that there's a secondary contract in place with the time extension as well.
Um, I think I heard that the state isn't beating the county's door down. So would it not be that if the sale falls through, it just falls back to the original plan anyway? We don't necessarily need to have a, a date in place, because if the sale falls through, it just goes back to the original plan anyway.
No, it, it's
So there's a purchase agreement that they have right now, BLM has with the property owner.
Right.
And this is one of the conditions of the purchase agreement is this amendment. So in my mind, that's pretty secure.
But, but if we approve this amendment and they don't sell it to BLM, then the revised amended reclamation plan doesn't require him to do anything.
You're correct, but, but it's BLM that entered into this purchase agreement with them. So the purchase agreement is BLM's assurance that they, they're interested in purchasing. The condition is this gets amended.
But, but to respond to, to respond to Rory, Rory is saying that the state's not beating down the county's doors. That's correct. But um, but if we change the plan today, it's changed, no matter who buys it.
With both of those statements, the, the state's not beating down the door, but it's still a requirement and the sale won't happen without it.
Right.
Good, correct, correct. Ms. Amelia?
I think that if we amend it today, it would also, not only if something with the BLM were to fall through, it would provide opportunities for other agencies interested in restoration actions and so that we don't need to make it contention on the, the BLM purchase. I think it's a good choice to be able to look at the property and find other alternatives because the current landowner and the county cannot afford to do restoration actions. And there's other parties that are interested in completing those actions and would have the willpower to find alternative ways to get it done.
Okay, well, since I'm, I'm more worried about messing up their appraisal, um, I'm going to propose to amend my motion to delete that condition if my secondor would.
Do you got a second on that?
He
Okay.
He seconded the original motion.
Okay.
So now the amended motion is simply
I'll second that, the new, the
No. Okay, you just need, I just needed Rory to, as my original secondor, to agree with my amendment.
Got it.
Uh, Mr. Flynn might have had a comment.
Yes, sir.
I see you have your hand up.
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
So we're, sorry, so we're back to my original, my amended motion. My amended motion is that the Planning Commission approve the amendment to the uh, Smith Tailing's Reclamation Plan.
Okay, and we do have a second on that.
Yes.
Okay. And Ms. Debbie, how about we do a roll call on this?
Certainly. Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleets, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Heaton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Five zero to approve the Reclamation Plan Amendment as presented.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Flynn and Mr. Buick, congratulations. And Mr. Ryan, thank you for your time as well and enjoy your family reunion. Onto item number three, Appeal of the Director's Decision for P dash twenty-four dash zero six.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners, Drew Plavani, Cannabis Division Director. For this item, before you this evening, we have an appeal of the Director's Decision to approve CCL six nine two. Um, there's quite a lot of documentation and additional attachments as part of this staff report. I want to point out that we received a number of emails and comments after the staff report was published. So you will see a bit of discrepancy between the attachments list in the staff report and the digital agenda, um, which includes the additional attachments received since this item was published. I'm gonna go through and give some brief project description and background. Um, and then I guess I will ask you guys if you want me to read through each of the specific reasons for appeal that were presented um, in the application for the appeal. Or if you would like to um, just jump straight into question and answer, I'll let you kind of guide the process because there's quite a lot of information here. So whatever is most helpful to the commission, I'm happy to oblige. Um, so I'll jump into the project description. Essentially, this is a, the, you know, the original license application was submitted on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. Um, in twenty twenty-three, there was an approval of the CCL. And as a result of um, staff becoming aware of the safety concerns that were raised by the appellant, the approval of the CCL and its associated environmental document was rescinded um, with a memo dated July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And then there was a special Planning Commission meeting held on eight, three, twenty-three, where that memo was presented to the Planning Commission. Um, essentially, the Appendix C document was rescinded to request that the applicant scope in the proposed improvements to the shared roadway. Um, because the meeting for eighty-two ninety standards was, was not addressed in terms of the additional um, construction activities required to, to meet forty-two ninety standards. So kind of get, getting into the reasons for appeal, would you guys like me to go through each of the six main complaints and read through um, staff and county councils sort of combined responses to these reasons for appeal? Or would you prefer to allow um, the applicant and appellant to speak and then jump into technical questions? You guys let me know what's most helpful.
What do, what do y'all think?
I mean, I, I read all the staff report. I just have a lot of questions for you, as usual.
Yep.
I, I've read it also, so I'm familiar, so option two?
I have questions. That's mostly what I have. Lot of questions.
Sounds like we'll get into technical questions.
Okay. Okay, do y'all have any technical questions for Mr. Drew?
Um, so in some of the correspondence and, you know, it's, it's talking about um, future projects on the parcel as far as a planned subdivision and a tentative parcel map and stuff. So is there a tentative parcel map? Are there other, um, is there a subdivision proposed that would allow other perhaps cannabis cultivation or commercial uses?
Um, to my knowledge, there has been um, an application for a subdivision there. I'm not aware of any specific, um, you know, whether or not it's intended to be used for a commercial cannabis or not, um, in terms of the description and documentation that was submitted in some of those later emails from the appellant or appellant's attorney. I don't believe that the analysis related to a not yet approved subdivision that is unrelated to the CCL project itself would be evaluated in the Appendix C document, which is tiered off of the Cannabis Program EIR. Um, and so for that reason, I believe that those, while they may be, you know, valid concerns as it relates to an environmental document for that subdivision, I believe that it is unrelated to the environmental analysis required for the issuance of the CCL.
Um, and then another discussion in there was um, proposing alternate access to Tulley Creek Road. So um, what is the status of that? Was that looked at?
So um, I also want to point out that we have Senior Planner Bella Hedke on Zoom and Sean Cameron from County Council on Zoom that can answer, you know, some of the more specific questions potentially that I'm unable to answer or more, you know, legal related questions. Um, in terms of the information that was provided by the appellant or the appellant's attorney, there's no specific documentation that, that I've seen that was provided as it relates to any evidence other than reference to the community plan. There's no evidence related to the, some doc, providing some documentation that shows that there was historical easement from Tulley Creek Road. That being said, it is my understanding that that was the primary access because there are three parcels there and all three of those parcels were formerly part of Talco. Um, and so my understanding is that, you know, several property owners back, I believe when Fred May owned it, you know, the primary access was from Tulley Creek Road and kind of went on the north side of the middle site and dropped down and went to where you see that residence that's now accessed off of Oatman Road. Um, that being said, again, there, there was no documentation provided uh, related to the existence of that easement or the dissolvement of that easement. And so in discussion with County Council, um, it was concluded that, you know, essentially we weren't here to do the work of the appellant and if they didn't provide evidence to, to that effect, then there was nothing for us to evaluate.
But in terms of, you know, helping the applicant, did you, did the Cannabis Division pursue that? That that might be a way to resolve this, to, to go to Tulley Creek Road instead of Highway three?
I think that that's far beyond the purview of the Cannabis Division to facilitate easement disputes. It's also beyond the scope of the county generally. The, I think the way that we looked at it from a project evaluation standpoint as it relates to the CCL is there is legal access to that parcel and there is a valid encroachment permit for that shared roadway.
Okay, well then to kind of follow up on that, so I'm trying to figure out what is exactly the status of the Caltrans encroachment permit? Um, so for Oatman Road, um, did the applicant, the CCL applicant uh, make uh, improve, propose improvements to that um, juncture with Highway three to kind of address concerns? Are those permitted or what's the status?
So I'm sure that the applicant's agent, who has done all that siting work with Caltrans, can explain it to you much more clearly than I can, but based on the documentation that I've reviewed, yes, they did apply for and obtain an encroachment permit from Caltrans.
But does the encroachment permit change the current configuration?
In what sense?
Well, I mean, does it add like a turning lane or anything? Is it just kind of giving an encroachment permit for the existing conditions?
Um, my understanding, and again, I think the applicant's agent can describe it, you know, from a technical standpoint much more clearly than I can, but my understanding is that it has been, it, it is a expanded encroachment in terms of its width. But I, at least based on reviewing the letter from the appellant, they make the assertion that it, it does not meet the, the two-lane um, width standard that they think is appropriate.
Okay, um, I think that's all I have for now.
I'm gonna wait to hear. Okay.
Ms. Amelia? Did you have any questions? Okay. Done?
Well, I think one of the things that we need to have clarity on is the application for you and the road, are they are they combined? Do they have to be together? Or is the road and the easement a whole different subject? That's my question. Is the easement something that's dealt with, with other projects? Or does this access? Is, does this project affect this access?
So my understanding and the opinion of County Council, and it's referenced in, um, let's see, one of these responses, sorry. But basically, you know, to summarize, I, I think that um, the, my understanding of the existing practice is that the encroachment permit, the requirement for a recroachment permit is something that happens in conjunction with a building permit, when those building permits are referred to the Department of Transportation or Caltrans. That's sort of the capture mechanism for encroachment permits within Trinity County currently. And so in terms of the Cannabis Division's evaluation, there is a valid encroachment permit. And as it relates to shared roadways, my understanding is that there is no requirement for each person who utilizes a shared roadway to have obtained a secondary encroachment. You know, they, they share the encroachment. So in my understanding of it, the, you know, the first person or first party that applied for and obtained an encroachment permit is able to be utilized by all of those that have needed access to the shared driveway or shared roadway.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Plavani? Okay, well, with um, Mr. Michael Doots or your uh, agent, Thomas Gocha, who, who would like to? What's that? Okay.
The appellant, you mean?
The appell, applicant appellant.
Oh, I saw the wrong thing. So we're doing the appellant first, right?
The appellant.
Okay, I'm sorry, the, the appellant.
It's their submission of this appeal.
I'm sorry, I didn't even see the appellant thing on top. So, sir, I'm sorry.
Good evening, um, I'm Jim Underwood. I am a local attorney. I represent the appellants here, um, Brian and Wendy Young. Um, the Youngs, as, as you may have gleaned, are um, well, Mrs. Young is daughter of the owners of the residential property on Oatman Road, William and Kathleen Dudley. And of course, Oatman Road is the key, a key issue uh, on this appeal. Before proceeding into substance, I want to apologize to the chair for inadvertently uh, referring to the former chair in the letter I sent to the commission. Um, it seems like only yesterday that I submitted a prior letter and it's been a year ago and things changed. So what I want to do, I'm not gonna go through details. I'll um, instead uh, summarize what I think the, the, the key points are and what has been presented on behalf of the appellant. Um, comment on a few things I just heard uh, from the director and then be open for questions, reserving time to, to uh, respond to anything that the applicant may uh, also add. Basically, I want to start by saying what the appeal is not about. The appeal is not about whether or not commercial cannabis is appropriate at this location, generally speaking. I mean, it's, you know, industrial, manufacturing, commercial, it's described in the staff report. So long as it's consistent with the general plan, which includes the community plan and is consistent with um, the, the ordinances that the county's adopted to, to address uh, development. And, and that's referred And, and that's referred to specifically in the fire safety standard ordinance. SEQA is a big issue. SEQA is always an issue and I'll, and I'll further speak to that. Basically, though, when it comes to the general plan, I've, I've added a couple of just specific objectives and policies that, just to step back, general plan consistency is not about comparing land use maps to zoning and, and determining whether or not a use is, is permitted. It's about looking at not only those maps, but those objectives and policies to say, hey, if we approve this project, it will either further or certainly be consistent with those objectives and policies. And, and in this case, I mean, there's, there, there are several. The, the, the maps that the general plan and community plan have referred to Tulley Road. I mean, it's always been contemplated that there's access to and from the north. That's good planning, particularly when there's going to be additional development. And I'll come back to that. But, but even if, even if there had been analysis and your commission been presented with facts saying, yeah, we've looked at, we've looked at these points. We've, we've looked at the issues of road safety, which are addressed in the community plan and determined that it's acceptable. Then you have to really look at the fire safe standard ordinance that the county adopted. A driveway, this is not a driveway for purposes of, of that ordinance. It's, it's a street or road because it's a commercial use. That's just defined by the county. So what that means is if Oatman Road is acceptable, it has to be a two lane road. That's what the standard is. It has to have turnouts for safety. It's all about fire safety. And this is a very separate issue from, from SR, you know, state route three encroachment. We could, we could talk about that. I believe that that's an issue that is not deferred to the building permit process, but rather has to be looked at as part of SEQA. I mean, as many of you probably know, SEQA requires you look at a specific project and you look at contemplated future growth associated with that project or surrounding that project. You have to look at cumulative impacts. It's been acknowledged that there's this tentative map. It's going to intensify uses on that road on what now is a driveway and by its transformation will change. That is why compliance with that ordinance is so critical. So, so on the SEQA issue, the, the cannabis EIR is, is good to the extent it applies. It applies generally and it mitigates most every project issue in a very general sense. What it doesn't do and cannot do is address site specific impacts, including those relating to achieving general plan consistency, traffic, safety and circulation, fire emergency response goals. It doesn't, it, it, it has to, at least in the SEQA context, be addressed. Land use, growth inducing impacts, you know, the cannabis EIR didn't do that for this, this, this project. They couldn't have. Emergency response and life safety, the, the fire chief addressed that issue. That's the core issue. That's, that's a general plan and, and community plan issue. That's a ordinance issue. And it, it just can't be disregarded. There are cumulative impacts that, that have to be addressed and not deferred into, you know, into a, a building permit stage. That's just not, this is the discretionary project. This is when SEQA applies. I will say just on a couple of other issues, easements, lack of the easements. You know, the, the project proponents figures in the application actually refer to or show roads to the north toward Tulley. They're not defined. They're not explained. That's a non-issue. I mean, that is the historic use. There, you know, the county approved a project at, at six ninety Tulley Road previously, just to the north. It shows one wizard way goes, goes up to Tulley. That's what makes sense. That's what's happened historically. And the applicants can't be faulted if, if the current property owner didn't do due diligence, determine what the historic uses were, obtain an easement to the north, secure rights of way to ensure that the ultimate development that they foresaw could be met. That's, you know, but, but the county's role is to find general plan consistency in planning logic, notwithstanding what the proponent did or could have done and didn't do. So I would just summarize by saying, for lack of general plan consistency analysis and findings to support that approving this would be consistent with those objectives and policies, the commission just can't approve this. It, it could continue this and ask staff to do the work that's required for you to consider findings of general plan consistency, including community plan consistency, including whatever modifications to the road improvements for Oatman Road, setting aside the, the Highway three encroachment to meet the county's established standards. It's not a single lane, sixteen feet with turnouts and otherwise. So it could be continued for that purpose. Or, you know, it could be approved subject to conditions that you, you follow the general plan and find access up to Tulley, maybe using Oatman Road as a second access, but develop to proper standards. So you do have options, but deferring this to the permit, building permit stage would not be appropriate. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Underwood?
Definition, you, you use the term driveway and then you also use the term easement. And then in the, in some of the stuff that I was reading, they had different applications. So if you could clarify, that'd be great.
Good question. So in my attachment E, I refer to Oatman generally as a driveway. It, it serves as a driveway presently. Attachment E on page E one, no, E two, excuse me, has a definition of a driveway. It's under eight point three oh point oh five oh H. It's for a single family dwelling. Importantly, it's on the next page. Under R, page E, my page E three, roads, streets and lanes means access to any industrial or commercial occupancy. This is a road. This has to meet road standards. Road standards in the same ordinance includes sixteen foot width and, and, and periodic defined turnouts. And, and so, so is that responsive to your question? Easements generally kind of refer to what's on a deed, what a prop, what the property owner acquired as a legal matter, as distinguished from the county's ordinance that does distinguish driveways from roads.
And is a private road and a county road handled differently?
Not according to the ordinance. Any road which will be used for access to a commercial use that you approve has to meet this standard. It presents health and safety issues. And this ordinance is intended to address health and safety issues of the nature that the fire chief pretty vividly explained.
And can you show me on the map where the entrance to the, the applicant's? Where their entrance off of, of, of the road is? Is it in the beginning, the end, or is it at?
Well, let's see. The, so the appellant take access at the encroachment of Highway three and Oatman and then head south and then do west, do west. For, I think it's about eighteen hundred feet, two thousand feet, a little less than a half mile.
Okay. All right. So their, their access is really close to Highway three at present.
Their access is Highway three and Oatman, the intersection of Highway three and Oatman, which is the subject of the, the question that was posed about, you know, what the proposed improvements are. And I, and I believe those improvements must be considered by the commission today because they present the same kind of health and safety impacts that SEQA is intended to address in a discretionary permit approval.
Do they have other access options besides that?
I mean, there has been discussion about access off Highway three to the, let's see, it's directly to the north, to, to the north. You know, whether or not they secured or could secure a, you know, the, the historic access to Tulley is, you know, I guess uncertain, but I would say it's not the county's, it's not the county's role to, to, to ascertain that. The county's role is to say, what would be consistent with good planning? The general plan, the community plan. And then if you condition approval to require going up to Tulley Road as, as a prerequisite to proceeding, then that's up to the applicant to satisfy.
Thank you.
Sure. I, I, I just want to comment real quickly on a couple responses to questions, if I can. You know, future projects, I guess I've already spoken to. It is relevant to impact analysis, certainly not something that was considered in the EIR. It's a cumulative impact. It's a growth inducing impact. It's something that is fundamental to SEQA. You can't avoid that. And, you know, the, I would just, I would just finish by saying the county does have jurisdiction, has an obligation to find consistency and to either approve conditionally so that you achieve consistency with the general plan and, and A four community plan and that fire safe ordinance or deny. If you wanted to continue it again, I guess that's a possibility, but there are a lot of big hurdles in order to, to achieve good planning, consistent with the county's adopted plans and its fire safe ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you.
And we'd like to hear from the, the applicant or his agent. Mr. Doots, Doots or Mr. Thomas?
Hi, Thomas Goshua. I represent Mr. Deutsch, owner of Trinity Flavor, five zero four Oatman Road. As Mr. Plobani said, we submitted an application quite some time ago and this has been under review and we have gone through all of the steps and hurdles necessary to comply with SEQA, CDFW, Calfire, Caltrans, County DOT, Building and Safety, et cetera. Just a little bit of background and history. I, well, first I wanted to say I appreciate being here, Commissioner Chair and the members of the Planning Commission. So thank you for your time. I think staff did a great job on the staff report. I don't think we need to rehash through, you know, their analysis. I think it speaks for itself. But a couple of the points that keep coming up that I find frustrating for my client is that we're, we keep talking about this alleged access from Tulley Creek. Well, Tulley Creek is like a mile north of our house and we would have to somehow negotiate an easement through the parcel to the north, navigate through his sixty acres and get down to our parcel. Now, previously, these parcels were under one ownership or the same party owned the parcels and he probably drove wherever he wanted to and created dirt roads, access roads. There are no easements that give us access to Tulley Creek, nor did the general plan or the community plan from nineteen ninety six contemplate access to Tulley Creek. It talks about the Tulley Creek industrial area, but nowhere does it state access should be from here, Highway three, Tulley Creek, et cetera. Nor I don't think that would be appropriate or typically in a general plan. That general plan is general. It's a overview of how the community would like to see their area developed, not the specifics of where the access and easements are located. In this case, we do not have an easement. We have ran title reports. We pulled a complete chain of title from Trinity Title. We've had our attorney, surveyors, engineers, engineers review the documents. There is no easement to Tulley Creek, first off. Secondly, if you go to page one sixty two, one sixty three and one sixty four of your agenda packet, there is an easement document from nineteen sixty two. I added some emphasis in orange. Basically, if you go to the first paragraph, it does. So first off, Trinity Alps is now Trinity Flavor and Oatman is now Dudley Young as the owners. So that's the first emphasis that I added. Then secondly, the first paragraph talks about perpetual use by the Oatmans or the Dudley Youngs in this case. Perpetual use, they have the right to enjoy it unobstructed. They have the right to develop it. They have the right to use the driveway all at their own risk and own, own risk and own expense. The next paragraph down or two paragraphs down, then it talks about how our rights are that we are not giving up any access rights to cross over, use or enjoy that section of our property that we have, you know, graciously granted an access easement to a landlocked parcel that doesn't have any other access other than through the easement. On the second page, there's a paragraph that I emphasize, emphasize, added emphasis in orange where it talks about potential liabilities and obstructions by us granting the easement. And if we're ever delayed or, or, you know, caused issue, cause issues that would impede our ability to use, enjoy, access the easement for any, you know, financial losses or et cetera, et cetera. To me, those documents, that document is extremely clear. And I don't think that's a planning commission issue and I don't think it's a planning department staff issue. If the appellant believes that easement is not legitimate, fine, we can go to court and we can sort that out. We'll let a judge determine whether that easement is legal and binding based on how it was recorded in nineteen sixty two. Next, fire safety. So on, in the fire safety code, first, we do have Calfire approval. We went through a whole review process. We do have to add out turn, add turnouts. We have to maintain the road at a minimum of twelve feet wide, et cetera. And the fire chief has reviewed and approved our plan as submitted to them. So on page one thirty of the agenda packet where it talks about driveways. So by definition, under the fire code, a driveway is a vehicular pathway that serves no more than four residential units and any number of non-commercial or non-industrial utility or miscellaneous group U buildings. We don't have any industrial group buildings. We have residential structures and storage buildings. We're not adding any industrial buildings. We're not adding any commercial buildings. And as a result, the fire depart, or the fire chief, battalion chief agreed that in this particular case, the standards that he required us to incorporate into our Calfire driveway access approval plan was sufficient based on their code. And we will comply with that code, including a couple of turnouts, maintaining the minimum width, et cetera. Onward, we did go and obtain an encroachment permit from Caltrans. It was a lengthy, difficult process. We spent maybe thirty thousand dollars in engineering. That work is slated to start the first week of August. It's going to be probably another forty thousand dollars in construction work to remove and replace the driveway, widening it, adding a flare to the culvert, et cetera, to make it safer. And under that process with Caltrans, we had to go through what they call a design standard decision document, which is essentially. granting a deviation because of the unique circumstances. So they didn't take it lightly. We had to survey a quarter mile section of the road, we had to cut cross sections to do curve analysis, speed analysis, data, they, they studied traffic, accident records, speed studies, and ultimately, after a long, lengthy process that nobody took lightly as far as the safety concerns, CAL TRANS approved our access encroachment permit or our encroachment permit for access into the shared road or driveway, whatever you want to call it. And as I said, that work is ready to begin, the beginning of August. Now, one of the things that we do agree with the appellant in the documentation is there should be a maintenance agreement for this drive, shared driveway or roadway, and we'd be happy to not only have our attorney draft the agreement so the burden of cost would be on us, and we would, of course, let the appellant's review it with their attorney, whatever, and we'll negotiate whatever the conditions of that access agreement should be or maintenance agreement should be, but that is one thing that we we do agree because we're about to invest a lot of money in this shared driveway, and we want to make sure that our investment is secured as well. That being said, I really don't have any other comments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So when you said your CAL FIRE plans are approved, that the fire chief approved, you're talking about the CAL FIRE Battalion Chief, not the?
Greg.
Yeah, I know Greg, okay.
And it does require improvements. We are doing work to the entrance and to the driveway to meet their conditions of permit issuance.
Do you know if those conditions would change if you intensified the land use according to the tentative parcel map?
First, that application is not before the commission this evening. There's a lot of variations that we went through on what that plan may or may not be. And in no circumstances would we ever anticipate that any future applications, permits, or any anticipated development would come through this driveway. I think that it's fair to condition this just based on the existing structures and the application before the commission this evening. Furthermore, and on on another note, going back to two thousand two, the Trinity County Building Department issued a dwelling permit to five zero four Oatman for the dwelling. They issued building permits for the accessory buildings, greenhouse, septic system, everything to five zero four Oatman Road. That is our address for all intents, and it is our address for this property. And the fact that the previous owner drove from Thule Creek, I think, really gave the the neighbors some, you know, a sense of isolation that maybe wasn't really accurate because we've always had the right to use this part of our property.
And so, I mean, you've been describing the residential use, the storage and all that, but you are applying for a commercial cannabis cultivation license, so it would be a commercial use, correct?
In the sense that we would be cultivating and moving product, I guess, from the site along with potential workers. We also have talked about planting an apple orchard. That if we were planting an apple orchard, we wouldn't be before the commission this evening discussing any of this. We would have just done it already, so.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify because it is a commercial use.
Correct, but none of our structures under the building code definitions are commercial structures.
But what you're doing is you've got greenhouses, you're growing a product, you'll have workers arriving, you'll have people, you know, taking the product out, so that is commercial use.
It is a commercial cultivation license application, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rory. And you have a current CEQA?
Yeah, all of our documents have been completed with the planning staff like a year ago.
And they address all of Commissioner Falls' concerns?
That's a question for planning.
Just just an observation, CEQA and EIR will will take care of all that.
So I guess I want to comment that if you look through the six reasons for appeal as stated on the appeal application, there's no reference whatsoever to any appeal over the environmental document. The concerns stated or received less than a week ago after the staff commission, the staff report was published. And so had there been any language, because we've gone through this before, had there been any language related to, you know, CEQA concerns, you would have seen the appendix C document attached. Furthermore, I'm not aware, and I could be mistaken, but I don't believe that the appellant's or appellant's attorney have reviewed the updated appendix C. So I'm not sure on what basis they would be offering their opinion on that document.
But if I understand correctly, I mean, one of our jobs is determine, is to determine compliance with the general plan, the community plan, et cetera. And so even if the appellant didn't write that in their letter, that's still something we can consider whether or not it's consistent with those other documents because that's the Planning Commission.
Yep, and so you you will see in the staff report that there is, you know, sections on consistency with zoning code, community plan, and general plan. And so, given the fact that, you know, once we, because I'm on a fork volunteer fire department, so I've had, you know, significant conversation with Chief Warshower about this specifically. I know the road, I know the, you know, Oatman Road, I'm aware of the safety hazards and fully agree that, you know, something needed to be done, which is why the approval was rescinded last year and the applicant directed to incorporate into their environmental document these road upgrades.
And we were happy to do so because we we we, it's not a great driveway approach, we all understand that. We're making it better, we're we're improving it as part of this.
Mr. Rory. I'm very familiar with this road also. I've spent a lot of time on this road. It is not a good road. But you do have a an encroachment permit, and you have committed to making all improvements and repairs, all associated pullovers or layouts for traffic?
Contractors scheduled to start first week in August.
Copy. And then you mentioned as far as access, a title search document you have submitted from nineteen sixty-two, nineteen sixty?
Yeah, well, the easement was record, the ingress egress easement to benefit Oatman was recorded in nineteen sixty-two, yes.
Nineteen sixty-two. And there's been no further updates or amendments to that document as far as you can find out?
I'm aware of.
I believe the language in that document is
pretty clear.
Pretty clear.
Mr. Don, did you have any questions?
Ms. Amelia?
Not at this time, thank you.
Did you have any more, Mr. Rory? Possibly?
Possibly, but not, I'll reserve that.
Okay, Ms. Carol, did you have any?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, well, with that, thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And your name was Mr.?
Thomas Goshia, G O C H A. I live at sixteen eighty-four Morgan Hill Road.
But it's Goshia?
Goshia, G O C H A.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I had asked to be able to respond. Can I briefly respond to just a couple of comments?
Okay, yeah, that'd be okay.
Thank you. I think the the applicant's representative just hit it on a key issue, and that is the appropriate road standard if access from Thule is not required. And I believe the general plan and community plan, as vague as it is, as map showing only Thule Road is the vicinity access, but that's for the commission to sort out. If Oatman is used, the definition in the ordinance, and I think it was just acknowledged, this is not a non-commercial use, this is a commercial cannabis license, it's a commercial use. So the definition of driveway doesn't apply. The definition in the fire safety standard ordinance relating to roads, streets, and private lanes applies. Whatever the easement says, it's irrelevant to compliance with that code, okay? So the only other point is, you know, the issue of CEQA compliance has been raised time and time again. A year ago, the actual application for appeal this time raises the safety issue explicitly. The key issues in CEQA are local safety. The EIR doesn't address it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna.
Can the property owner briefly comment?
Well, we're gonna have a public comment here in just a second, so yes, in just a moment, you can. We're gonna, now we're gonna go to public comment, so here in the room.
Sir?
Your.
Thank you, commissioners. I would like to introduce myself, Brian Young. This is my wife, Wendy Young. We represent Kathleen Dudley. Mostly, I want to hit on the safety issues. Obviously, Drew, Rory are familiar with the driveway. They both made comments that they feel that the new improvements by the CAL TRANS encroachment address the safety issues, and we disagree wholeheartedly. If you take time to look at the the encroachment, the new design, it has done nothing to do anything to to deal with the safety issues. They say they're going to widen it, but it doesn't show any width on any of the plans anywhere. And if you look at what it would take to widen the throat of that cantankerous encroachment, it would take a widening of the culvert considerably to be able to gain the shoulder that you could build on to actually widen it. The direction that it comes in now, there's no way that they they can do that without widening the culvert. I've talked to CAL TRANS extensively about why they didn't address the culvert issue in the in the permit. Their comment was is that their Trinity Flavors property encroaches so far into the county, the state right of way that they can't hold their feet to the fire and make them put in the actual detailed encroachment that everybody else has to put in that would make it safe to lane so that when there's somebody coming around that fifty-five mile an hour corner, that there's not only one lane for the person that's sitting in it to exit out onto the road, the person coming from town around the corner, they have to stop in that lane in a fifty-five mile an hour blind corner and sit there and wait for the throat of that encroachment to clear. And at that point, if somebody else is coming from the other direction and this person can't clear the driveway, this person is sitting in the right-hand lane, just waiting for all this other stuff to happen while the guys come from town winding up at fifty-five mile an hour, and he's coming into that corner. And I believe that the chief fire department, Leroy Warshower, addressed that, that he had concerns that in response to a fire, there would be major congestion at the top of that driveway, and he has seen the new CAL TRANS detailed plans, and it also agrees that nothing in there shows any width as far as what it's gonna be to what it is now. There's just, there's a, there's a huge safety issue there that until that happens to be made into two lanes or a turn lane put in or some way for that person that has to sit in the middle of the road to be able to get out of the way of hazard, it's it's very clear that it's a very unsafe situation. And nothing that we've talked about here that has to do with the encroachment addresses that. We've talked about easements and all the other stuff that are aside from the big hammer here and that's safety. We, my family, my wife's family.
Your your time has expired. But thank you very much for your comment.
A whole lot more to say.
Uh, but thank you very much for your comment. Was there?
I get a turn.
Okay.
Yes, oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to say that when I'm sitting in the encroachment waiting to pull out onto Highway three, if someone's coming at me in a dump truck full of soil, the only way for me to alleviate it is to back up a considerable amount to allow them to come on. There is no way possible for two vehicles to pass each other in the very tight encroachment. My mother had to back up for a dump truck load of soil. And and I just don't want to see it becoming someone sitting in the encroachment and someone sitting in Highway three looking at each other. And that's happened on numerous occasions. You're waiting for somebody to make a move, so you can either pull around them and cross the double yellow line or you back up and allow the construction vehicles to come on to the single lane driveway we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Young. Does anybody else in the room have a comment? No, anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? Okay, well, we'll close that. And do we have a motion?
I move that we I'll take that back, never mind. Okay, open mouth, insert foot. I move that we deny the appeal, but add a condition that requires that the project meet PRC Code forty-two ninety standards prior to commencing operations.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. So I just want to say I totally understand your concern about the driving in, I I was in Hayfork last week to drop stuff off at Hayfork Fire Department, and I drove down to the entrance, and I totally get what you're talking about. It's a dangerous situation. I'm also very disappointed that what was presented to us is just keep blinders on, don't look at anything else, just look at the CCL requirements. Whereas the Planning Commission as a whole, I think, has a responsibility to ensure compliance with the Hayfork Community Plan, with the industrial plan, and I don't think that that this proposal, when you look at the bigger picture of proposed tentative parcel map and and all the other things that are going on there, I don't think that we are doing our job by just looking at the CCL. But I can see that county council is going to probably cut our feet out from under us if you try to look at the big picture. And so I would like to at least address the appellant's concerns about the health and safety issues. But I'm really hoping that at some point, the plant, the building department or cannabis, if this turns into a multiple project thing, comes back and looks at it as a bigger picture. Because right now, we're just looking at a little tiny piece, and we're not doing a very good job. Okay, that's my spiel.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. I heard this statement, I read that it said that CAL TRANS said that the property came into their easement. Well, the easement that CAL TRANS has is an easement for CAL TRANS for road improvements. So I don't see how that can be an obstacle or a hindrance to expansion, for example, for the culvert. Because if that's inside that easement, then, and it's a compliance issue, then CAL TRANS has that room and also the appellant is the person that's doing the improvement, so I don't see how that property could be infringing on that.
The applicant's doing the improvements, not the appellant.
I'm sorry, the applicant.
So so PRC forty-two ninety is incorporated almost verbatim in the county's fire safety ordinance, the the county code eight point three oh. So and it requires two nine-foot lanes. So that would hopefully address if they if they have to comply with forty-two ninety, it's going to make them widen the road. So you won't have to have people backing up when someone else is trying to turn in, they can turn in without waiting for that other person to clear.
Well, I think that brings into the question, road versus driveway. And so, based on the current plans, it meets forty-two ninety as a driveway, is my understanding. And so, based on the current plans, it meets 4290 as a driveway, is my understanding. And we can get comment from Drew on that. But that, for it to move up into 4290 standards as a road, it would be widened. And so that's...
Well, but as soon as you add a commercial use, it becomes a road by the definition of road. That's why I wanted to clarify earlier that it's a commercial use. So now, it's not just a driveway serving residential. It's a road because it's got a commercial use. So now, the newer standards of 4290 would apply. At least, that's what I think.
May I ask a question of you, Carol, or of the commission? So if we, you know, if what you decide is to condition this approval so that the project meet 4290 standards, I would like to understand who has the authority to say that it meets 4290 standards? Because the reason that I approved this application was based on the documentation that Greg Tavallaro said that it met 4290 standards. So that's a question. My suggestion is that if the condition that you're intending to, you know, add to this project is that it meet 4290 road standards, then let's specify that. Because as I view the project documentation and the approval from CalFire, it sounds like it does meet, in his opinion, 4290 standards. So let's just be clear, because I don't want to come back here and do this again.
That was my question. You...
Okay, well, then I'll be more clear. I think that they should meet the 4290 standards that require two nine-foot width lanes.
As a commercial roadway.
That's what it is.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure that it's clear, so that when you all make your decision, if that's the decision, then I'm clear on what standards need to be met prior to the approval of the CCL.
Because I really, I mean, like I said, I really don't think that this is in compliance with the Hayfork Community Plan. I mean, if you read the community plan where it says, you know, okay, so you're talking about new commercial developments that require discretionary county approvals, which this is, shall be served by county-maintained roads or binding road maintenance associations, we're letting them off the hook by just not make... Well, they'll have to have a binding maintenance agreement. But I mean, at least we're not requiring, we're not requiring them to go up to a county road standard.
And so maybe that's a good question for Sean Cameron, because I'm not certain. Can the Planning Commission direct the, you know, these private landowners to establish a road agreement?
I think that's what they were proposing anyway.
What was that, Rory?
I believe they can, and I think that burden on the landowner is outrageous.
Should we, is Mr. Cameron on?
I am. Yeah, I think you can compel that. Yeah, you can add that as a condition.
Because the other part of the community plan says, when they're talking about subdivided, so at some point, if they have the tentative parcel map approved and it is subdivided, then they have to provide reasonable level roads. And, you know, that's where they're talking about accommodate fire equipment and other vehicle under emergency conditions and so forth. I think they're gonna be ahead of the game if they go ahead and widen the road, makes it easier for them to get their tentative map parcel.
I don't disagree. I don't think that that subdivision is really at all up for, you know, debate or inclusion into the approval of the CCL. However, I will say that if you look at the maps that were, you know, included, they show a new access point with a road that does meet those standards, and it is not Oatman Road. So to the, you know, applicant's agents' comments, based on the map that I've seen, which is really unrelated to the CCL approval at this point, they show a new access point. It is not Oatman Road. It meets those driveway standards, and at least from what I've seen, would then be consistent with both the community plan and the fire safety ordinance.
Okay.
If I may? Yes, just go ahead. I have a hard time with this one. We fight, we fight these cannabis growers on, they're just trying to make a living. If this was an orchard or a vineyard, we would not be here having this discussion. It's absolutely blatant reefer madness, discrimination against cannabis. As I said, I know this road intimately. If you look at your drawing, there's a bridge here that crosses over, I believe that would be Thule Creek. The bridge right here, if you follow the, it's this map here.
And we can put any of those up on the screen that you would like, if that's helpful.
Okay, I see, I see where... Oatman Road, and you come in there, and there's a white spot at the end, you turn left, there's some houses there. You'll see in this drawing, there's a green, these two green houses, they're across that bridge. For all the concerns about fire safety, when I was last in there, I couldn't drive a pickup truck across there, because they weren't sure the structure of that bridge was strong enough for a pickup truck. So we have someone who is zoned correctly, has completed an EIR, has completed a CQ, has a CalFire approval, has an encroachment permit, and a commitment to build that road, to improve it with turnouts and all associated necessary parts to appease the process. I can't wrap my head around that we're going to try to make this person put in, did you say 18-foot, two 18-foot lanes, Commissioner Fall?
No, it is.
Yeah. I've made that turnout on the highway three more times than I can count. I think it is absolutely appalling to put that burden on the applicant. He has jumped through all hoops, has attained all permits, all encroachments, has a commitment to improve. I cannot wrap my head around not upholding the appeal. Sorry, granting...
Denying.
Deny. Yeah, sorry, I had it backwards. Denying and allowing this applicant to get on with business at hand. Enough with the reefer madness, move on.
So if I... The 4290 would require it to where we have a 18-foot roadway, right?
If you classify as a road, yes.
But the one that they're applying to, or planning on starting in October, is a...
In August.
What'd I say?
August.
August. Would be a nine-foot or 12-foot.
No, all they're proposing in October is a...
August.
Encroachment permit.
Okay.
And then you had a commitment to uphold the road and make the turnouts, and yeah. Do you know how wide that commitment was to make that road? 12 feet, that's what I thought you said. Bust turnouts.
But 12 feet wide doesn't really help the issue of someone trying to pull in while someone else is sitting there waiting to pull out.
And on right here.
Yeah.
Right, I would say the road width and the encroachment design are somewhat, you know, intertwined, but somewhat unrelated as well in terms of, you know...
It's no different than any other road in Trinity County.
So Rory, all of my access points off Highway 299 for our property had to meet those standards when I applied for my licenses for what I did down there. I had to have commercial wet to everything that I did, and it didn't have them before. So it's not really reefer madness. It is a reasonable thought. It truly is.
I agree, I agree, and I respect that, and you have a beautiful property. But I believe that if this was a vineyard or an orchard, it would not be here in front of the Planning Commission.
Possible.
This is Bella, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to caution that I wanted to, I felt a little uncomfortable with final approval of road measurements being on any county staff. So I would just ask that it's clarified in your motion that you give CalFire as the signing authority on that.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bella.
I don't... Yeah. If Greg has already signed off on, I'm not sure what Greg was looking at as far as commercial use and so forth, you know. I know he's a really busy guy, so I'm not sure that that's gonna address my concerns.
I'll share this, dealing with, it's not related, but it is related, there's also the element that is, like, I have the remodeling of the church over there in Ruth, that we're going on, the building contractor, it was telling me that it was like that he had a person, a building inspector in Humboldt County, signed off on a thing, and then another person came in, another building inspector, and says, oh, you need to change this, but if it's already been signed off and approved, it was like, I can't tell you what the guy was looking at or wasn't looking at. He signed off on it, and it was like, and for us to go back in and say, well, I'm not sure if he saw something appropriately, how could we justify and say, oh, no, you can't, you can't do that, we need to do this when it's already been signed off and on everything else? That's technically, in the building aspect, that's not legal.
So let me read, so I'm looking at the current county code for road width emergency access. So this is a road because it's serving commercial use, according to the definition of road. So 8.30.140 road width says, "All roads shall be constructed to provide a minimum of two nine-foot traffic lanes providing two-way traffic flow." That's what I'm saying they should meet. That's our fire safety ordinance. So that's what I said earlier. PRC 4290 is incorporated almost verbatim into our fire safety ordinance, so it's the same thing. So I'm just saying, I can reword it and say, require that the project meet Article 2, or I could just say, require that the project meet 8.30.140 county code prior to commencing operations. Then that takes it away from CalFire, and it's just referencing the county code.
I believe that's an unfair burden.
Question, please, sir.
Applicant, raise his hand. Is he allowed to talk?
No, that's not, that's not, because that could open up a can of worms.
I was just bringing, I was just bringing it to your attention.
And I, I do have one question. Does Oatman Road just end at the two houses with the, in the green there? Is that where, that's where it ends? Okay, so the, so it just comes off at that weird degree, and it makes its 90, and then winds its way around to, I'm presuming y'all's house. Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna just restate my motion. I move that the Planning Commission deny the appeal with the added condition that requires that the project comply with county code 8.30.140 road width prior to commencing operation. My second would agree? Or not?
I have a counter motion.
Substitute?
Come again on that, Rory?
I have a counter motion.
Subsequent, yeah. Okay, what is your subsequent motion?
I make a motion that we approve CCL 692.
No, you wanna, you wanna deny the appeal.
Sorry.
Deny the appeal unapproved, no.
Wanna just stand and appeal.
You wanted to deny the appeal, which proves the permit.
Yes. Sorry.
Can you finish your motion?
Oh, sorry, I was waiting for Commissioner Heaton. I make a motion to uphold the appellant's request to deny the CCL 692 with findings stated by the planning commission. Right? Yeah. Or should it be? Yeah, that's the other one. Apologies.
We're revisiting.
Are you looking through the staff recommendations?
That's what I thought I said. Yes.
I'll uphold my second to your... If needed.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, but now he's making a substitute motion.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Rory?
My subsequent or substitute motion is deny the appeal on P-24-06, upholding the director's decision to approve CCL 692.
You need a second. You need a second.
Thank you.
And do we have a second? Based upon the evaluation of the detailed staff report?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you have a...
Did you desire to second that?
I'm thinking.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm gonna second it.
Okay. Ms. Carol? Ms. Carol, Ms. Debbie, I'm sorry. Do we have a roll call on this?
Okay, we'll do the subsequent motion first.
Correct.
The subsequent motion was deny the appeal, Project P-2406, and uphold the director's decision to approve CCL 692. Commissioner Ellis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleets, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Fall, how do you vote?
No.
Chair Heaton, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, subsequent motion is three to two in favor of denying the appeal.
Good. Thank you.
You better hope nobody gets hit at that intersection.